I call this work session of the Portsmouth City Council scheduled for today, September 11th, 2017. We're ordering Madam Kirk, will you call role for me?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burr?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. And colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, we have a ceremony at High Street Landing to remember events of 16 years ago. And that ceremony starts at 6:30, so we'll try to adjourn this meeting at 6:15. And the first item of business is a discussion about the moving of the Confederate Memorial from its current location to Cedar Grove Cemetery. We had asked, instructed the city manager to develop the steps that we need to take in order to move it from what its current location to the cemetery. And you're reporting back.
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, this evening's presentations are report backs from City Council requests. During the August 28th and 29th public work session in City Council, asked for the city manager to report back to City Council on the necessary steps for moving the Confederate Monument from its present location to Cedar Grove Cemetery. This evening's presentation, Mr. James Wright, City Engineer, encompasses the detailed components relating to the relocation of the Confederate Monument. The program evaluation review technique, better known as PERT chart, is the process chosen to present this information. The PERT chart is a project management tool that allows staff to organize, coordinate, and schedule tasks within a project relocation. Second presentation is a report back on the FY17 Portsmouth Public Schools reappropriation. Over the past two weeks, the city manager and school superintendent met numerous times and talked by phone repeatedly to review and discuss the movement of the schools FY17 reappropriation requests. The meetings were very insightful and resulted in both administrators agreeing on the reappropriation recommendations presented by Mrs. Alice Kelly, Chief Financial Officer, this evening. Also, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. A City of Portsmouth and Portsmouth Public School compact has been created jointly by the city manager and the superintendent to ensure a continuing collaborative working partnership between the city manager and the school superintendent. This will be signed by the city manager and superintendent during the public work session on tomorrow night. Mr. Wright.
Mr. Wright. When we get into the details of, it seems like the PERT chart is pertaining to the intricacies of what it would actually take to move the monument to the location, is that correct?
We've got everything encompassed in there, from legal to research, we've got everything in this presentation. Okay.
Well, I was just going to ask if, based on the time, if council would allow for the legal presentation, if you're concerned, then we can hear from the city engineer.
How does it flow?
It flows where we start talking about the pieces that legal ties into all of the pieces of which we're working with. And this is not going to take long, and there are going to be questions that Mr. Ashby comes in after we make this presentation.
There's some fundamental questions that have to be asked before we get into it.
We know that, and then we're going to talk about that today.
I agree with my colleague. I think before we address moving something, we've got to determine who it belongs to. Can we move something that's...
We have all of that in the presentation.
Not owned by us.
We have every piece of that.
And also, there's a question of a deed that was on record at the courthouse. Are those questions going to be addressed?
The questions, that's a part of this presentation, all the pieces that will have to be addressed.
All right, let's go on ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. This presentation will provide a report back on the prerequisites for consideration in relocating the monument at Court and High Streets. This chart's difficult to read on the screen, but you have a handout in front of you, and there's a display board to the right for decisions to examine. City staff collectively examined all the questions and scenarios that need to be evaluated for consideration in the relocation of the monument at the corner of Court and High Streets. These questions and scenarios are presented in this PERT chart. This PERT chart is intended to logically inform City Council and to guide staff through the process for relocating the monument. For the purposes of this presentation, the PERT chart has been divided into seven segments. Next slide. Segment one, Legal and Public Affairs. If you look at your PERT chart that you have in front of you and to the side, this runs to the bottom of the chart throughout the entire process. The processes for executing this project will require legal opinions and determinations, and if necessary, court proceedings. Similarly, this project will require a steady flow of public information throughout to maintain transparency, to keep citizens abreast of the progress, and to also document the project for the record. Next slide. Segment two, Identifying Funding and Background Assessment. The key step in this segment is to identify the funding source so that the work behind the scenes can commence. This will include researching the documents listed in the National Register, reviewing conservation reports, visual inspection, and targeted conservation. At this step, you will begin setting templates for the existing and proposed sites. You will also start to compile key data about the existing monument. Key to that data is general condition, how many pieces compose the monument, and how the monument's assembled. Next slide. The detailed analysis of the existing site is segment three. Information from segment two will feed into this segment as you determine how the monument is constructed and how the best method for disassembling and transporting the monument are needed. Analysis of the existing foundation, determination of the approximate weight, and general assembly of the monument will direct you to how to lift the monument and how to support the components during the move. There are also miscellaneous components, such as the time capsule, that need to be addressed. Next slide. So this takes you to the bottom portion. Segment four, the detailed analysis of the proposed site. Here you will analyze everything about the proposed site, looking at the site configuration and any constraints that could potentially impact the relocation. There will be an examination and analysis to verify that there are no graves at the proposed site, and also the space in and around the proposed site to verify placement, assembly, and viewing space. Listen to the right, you'll see all the little items required to complete this effort. Soul borrowings, how to maneuver in the cemetery, is there adequate workspace or just a few? Next slide. Segment five, City Council Briefing and Decision. The current focus is on the proposed site and all the work necessary to get to this segment. If there's anything during the analysis of this proposed site that presents substantial concerns, then the site analysis will circle back to the previous segment and start all over again. At this stage, all the analysis for both the existing site and proposed site is complete. Alternative locations within the cemetery have also been vetted as necessary. Staff will brief City Council on its findings and present an ordinance for funding the relocation project. Next slide. Segment six, Preparing to Relocate the Monument. Companion projects will be required to facilitate the move of the monument. Determining the extent, schedule, and cost associated with these projects while developing project plans and specifications for relocating the monument are key in this step. There are CIP funds and FEMA funding from Hurricane Matthew for the replacement of the cemetery wall fence. Work associated with this project will have to be coordinated with these efforts. And if necessary, there will be companion projects to reconstruct portions of the cemetery road and the existing fast food parking lot adjacent to the cemetery. Segment seven. This segment includes all the logistics of the actual move, the conservation at the end of the relocation, and the road repair project after the monument is relocated. I'm sorry, next slide. So in this slide, you see security, traffic control by traffic engineering in the police department, disconnecting the signal at London and Court, disconnecting utility wires at several locations, a partial street closure, and coordination with the restaurant establishments. With that, that's the summary. I'll take any questions.
Well, this is very comprehensive questions. What lies on the critical path? I'm sure there are legal issues.
Mr., it was going to heal into Mr. Ashby.
If I might, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council.
Mr. Wright, what you just presented, wouldn't most of this be entailed in a scope of work in an RFP that would be sent on?
The majority of this work would be done by city staff.
I mean, as far as some of the actual items you had up there, as far as the moving and the disconnecting, would that be done by the contractor?
Once you got to the procurement piece, yes, sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the presentation tonight does not include any timetables should there be any type of court intervention. The city attorney's office has been engaged in the legal review along with the rest of the city staff in terms of preparing and planning items for your consideration. We continue to monitor and survey the localities that are addressing similar issues, which you have seen up through the RFP selection process, as well as the other issues, items that are prerequisites that are being addressed and prior to any action by City Council. Of course, I will provide you a closed session briefing with regard to additional legal details. And of course, subsequent to that, you will have the opportunity to take whatever action is necessary. And you all are aware, I did provide you some additional communications prior to.
First of all, there was an email that I sent to the city attorney and CC council where I requested, if there were no objection from council, that the deputy city attorney,
Cordell, update us because she had given previous research to the previous council. And I'm curious to know why isn't she here to update us based on the fact that council had directed that that be the case? I'm asking the city attorney why she is not here to update us on her previous research.
Dr. Whitaker, as you know...
No, I don't know. So that's why I'm asking.
Well, let me say, my obligation is as counsel to the city council. I am the counselor to the city council. As you know, I provided counsel for the benefit of new and existing counsel, the public discussion that was held beforehand.
That's not my question. My issue is that there was a request for Attorney Cordell to update council this evening, and she's not here. There was no objection from council, so why isn't she here to update us?
Because the briefing is my obligation.
Well, then, so you can ignore, if council has consented, you can ignore that.
Dr. Whitaker, as you know, the...
There was no objection from council. And I think that if that's the path we're going to follow, that council consents and it is not followed, then if that's the path we're going to follow, then we all should be made aware of that.
Consent is not necessarily absent of comment, okay? Let's be orderly in our discussion.
I'm not out of order.
I didn't say that you're out of order, doctor. Let's be orderly in our discussion. We had a very comprehensive...
Well, the reason I'm raising this is because I don't see why she would go into closed session on this.
I'm perfectly willing, unless there's a need for closed session because of potential litigation, for all this conversation to be in public.
I have no problems with it.
Yeah.
And so if you could...
I request everybody not to be, let's be respectful of each other and to include, please, to include how we treat our appointees.
Wait a minute now, I'm not going to let you disparage the comments that I'm making because I sent it to you there, counsel. And then the other issue is that the city attorney sent an email to council requesting clarification on what it is we should be presented with this evening. I responded to that with three points of clarification based on the attorney general's opinion. And so I don't know what he just said as far as where we're moving legally. The three points that I raised in that memo which I sent to council was, does the Code 15.21812 apply to us? Is there an act by the General Assembly that prevents that monument from being moved? And are there other legal considerations? That's what I thought we were...
I am not disparaging you, sir. And I think that if you want to ask those questions now...
I've already asked them. I asked them in the email. And all I'm asking is that we address those issues in open session so that we can move forward. This PERT analysis, that's great, but I think the legal issue is what is at heart here.
We ask the...
I've already heard one colleague raise that.
Sir, we ask the city manager to give us the steps to get from where we are to where we want to be. She's done that. There are things that lie along the path, such as what you just raised.
Which was raised by the city attorney.
Exactly. I'm not arguing with you, sir. Please understand.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just raising the point that the city attorney queried us about this.
Correct. So what we're going to, we're going to hear your questions that you just asked. And it's okay with me, if it's okay with my colleagues, our colleagues, that we ask the city attorney to respond to those questions. Would you like to restate them?
I think he, the email, I think everyone received.
Would you say that this is a public...
Those three points, where do we stand legally in regards to the attorney general's opinion on the Code of Virginia, Section 15.21812? Is there an act by the General Assembly that limits the movement of that monument because it was designated by the General Assembly? Is there other legal considerations? That's the three points that the attorney general letter outlined that council should follow. And so I'm ready to hear on that.
Mr. Ashby.
Let me start with the last one. There are a number of other considerations that this council should have some understanding of after a thorough discussion in closed session. Yes, there's an AG opinion that was given to the City of Norfolk that addressed some issues that are similar to this case. That AG opinion is still in flux, and as much as the Charlottesville case still continues. Those on top of, and what was the first one, doctor?
Well, you have the attorney general's opinion. I'm just quoting from the attorney general's opinion. He gave a three-point criteria. And I think you should explain to council, why is it that you have this in flux because of the Charlottesville case when the Danville Court has already ruled on this as well? And so the three points that you have, does Code 15.21812 apply to the monument in Portsmouth?
Dr. Whitaker, first point first. The City of Danville has ruled that the statute involved applies prospectively. The City of Charlottesville has imposed an injunction, the basis of which would be if they thought the party requesting the injunction could prevail. We have not received an opinion out of Charlottesville as of today. It would have been short work if the court was inclined to line up with Danville or the AG. There are some issues that are in flux, doctor.
Does the Code of Virginia 15.21812 apply to our monument?
Doctor, I've answered the question. It's been interpreted by the Danville Court to apply prospectively post-1997.
Right. So does that apply to our monument?
Our monument was put in place prior to 1997.
So it does not apply to our monument?
The Danville Court has ruled that it would not apply.
And the attorney general also ruled that it doesn't apply.
And doctor, and doctor, as I said, and Charlottesville is in flux.
The Code does not apply to our monument. That's all I'm asking. The attorney general didn't leave it in flux with the opinion that was given to Norfolk.
Is the nature of your question, does the current HE opinion, which I've only read in the paper, apply to our monument? Is that the nature?
Well, there are three criteria that the attorney general said locality, the city attorney is aware of. And the first is whether the code that has been referenced in council by citizens and by council members, does 15.21812 apply to our monument? That is not in flux.
I think he's answered that question.
Does it? What was his answer? I didn't hear it.
I heard him.
What did you hear him say?
I heard him say that the Danville Court ruled on the Danville monument. The question is whether or not the Danville opinion applies here, which I think is a good question. And then we have the AG's opinion, which was not directed to us, but directed to Norfolk. I think the question would be, would the AG's opinion apply to this monument? And I don't think he was asked that question.
Well, the AG was interpreting the statute.
Correct.
And I thought I heard him say that the AG said that that statute is to be interpreted prospectively.
Is that what you said?
That is where the AG is and Danville is, again.
It's not where you're pointing.
Well, we don't know. And that's simply my point with regard to the purpose and the design of this instruction is certainly council is entitled to quite a bit of information and context, as Dr. Whitaker said, other considerations, and there are a number aside from those of the AG.
Well, I'm just asking about point number one. Does the Code apply? The AG said it's prospectively, which you said. The Danville Court said it's prospective from 1998. Is that what you...
I believe it's 97.
97. And the AG said that it doesn't apply to monuments built prior to 1904.
Those are some other considerations.
Right. So now, does that apply to our monument then?
Those are some of the basis for the consideration of this council's decision going forward. Certainly, they apply.
The AG made it perfectly clear as far as how Section 15.21812 is interpreted.
He's not a judge. He's just giving an opinion. He can't interpret the law. He can only give a legal opinion.
And that's what he did.
But it's not, it has, just like Danville doesn't apply to us, and it hasn't made it to the Supreme Court of Virginia. So there's another step. It could be appealed.
It has been appealed to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court refused to hear it.
And at this point, we can even, you can even jump one step forward in the fact that currently, until it's been litigated, whether it applies or not, our monument is still on private property with a recorded deed.
That's another issue.
It is.
That's another. I'm just trying to get clarity on 15.21812.
Hold on, hold on. We're here. I want this to be a full discussion and not just, you know, one or two people talking. And what clearly lies on the critical path are the legal questions. And I think it can be summed up in two. One is whether or not the state code applies or not. And the second is the ownership question. Personally, I find comfort in the Danville lawsuit. I find comfort in the AG's opinion. But I think it puts our city attorney on the spot to say in a definitive way, does it apply or not? Because we could be challenged as to whether or not it applies in Portsmouth. And I'm ready for that challenge. And so I think that that's going to be indeterminate until someone brings a challenge. I'm going to get to you. Brings a challenge. But I think I find comfort in what's transpired. The second issue is the ownership issue. And the question is, there's a claim that the city doesn't own the monument. And that's, that would be an interesting discussion, too. Bill, I recognize you.
Well, I agree. The ownership question of the monument and the property that it sits on are paramount before we discuss anything else. I think those two things have to be cleared first. But getting back to Mr. Wright's presentation on potential moving of the monument, I don't see anything here where that monument is over 100 years old. I understand there may be a hairline crack in it. I don't, I see something that says general condition, but I don't see anything here reference potential damage, the value of the monument itself, and the potential liability if it indeed is damaged during the moving of it. And that will go back to the ownership. Obviously, if the city can prove they own it, well, the damage is on us. But if it's owned by another party, which there is a deed, paperwork, it says it is because it was built through private funds. And I do appreciate my colleague wanting to donate a year's salary towards the movement of it. I think anybody that supports the movement of it, Mayor and a couple others, I think you should follow my colleague's example and donate your, a year's salary towards that. I think that would be an honorable thing to do.
Thank you, Bill. I think your concerns about the engineering are addressed in Mr. Wright's PERT chart here, certainly between this first and second errors.
Yeah, so...
The way I look at that is that there's a lot of engineering work that goes into providing the answers that you just put, that you just asked.
So if you take a look at segment two, which is slide number five. So, that's it. So you see the conservation piece. As you're going through that conservation piece, you're going through the reports that have been done on the monument that detail the existing condition. And then you go and pick out those things in that report that have been highlighted, similar to if you had a bridge inspection or any other facility, and go look and see what's in the past, I want to say 10 years the report's been done.
I would think that that would need to be updated.
We would do that.
And so you would go in and...
Mister, members of council, in our groups and team, we have a whole team approach here, where we say conservation from having the, a conservationist to come in and actually examine, I mean, we are not equipped to do that, no different than we were equipped when we had to deal with the soldiers. We had to bring in a conservator, that's what it was called, out of Richmond through the Historical Society. So in that piece, we would have to do all of that kind of work prior to, and synonymous with all of the other kinds of work that would be going on at the same time. So while we didn't spell out every word, but those key things tell us the work that has to be done.
That's fine.
I think it's really important for us to understand that there is a critical path from the first zero to the last zero. And the critical path, on that critical path of those steps that we must get through in order to make this move, if there's a legal issue that needs to be resolved, it's on the critical path. I stand by what I said, that I see two legal issues, the applicability of that section of the state code, and the question about the deed. The deed is interesting. I mean, we all have read the deed of it. And it says, "I convey whatever interests I may have." Well, I may give the vice mayor a deed saying, "I convey any interests I've got in the pavilion." And it can be recorded. But lo and behold, I don't have any interests.
That doesn't mean you have any.
That's right. And so you have to peel back, you know, what interest lies below that.
Well, that's why I've requested from the city attorney to give us a legal update on that debate, which I think he's had enough of time.
Okay. Let's, I'm going to recognize you. You had your hand up first.
Mr. Ashby?
Yes.
I feel like you would like to give us a closed session briefing tonight at another time with more information so that we can delve into these issues further. Am I reading the tea leaves correctly?
Certainly. And I'm not, and let me be clear, it is council's prerogative to have a similar, if not the same discussion in public. But my obligation is to advise you all and get you prepared in closed session in advance because certainly the mayor and other council members already...
because certainly the mayor and other council members are raising some issues, but there is a laundry list of issues. And as you all are aware, these issues are occurring throughout the country at the same time. And they do have some influence in terms of what you have. What you have before you is the perk chart and the, what I deem the prerequisites are what I said before, prerequisites for the decision. You all have those items in front of you. You've had them for your consideration. I think one block builds on the second block, and then you all do whichever you...
Did you want to do that, like tomorrow night, or a week from now, or a month from now?
I believe the best opportunity, most advantageous time is either the 22nd or the...
25th, 26th.
25th or the 26th.
To do what? I'm not clear on what it is.
To have a closed session on all the issues related with regard to the monument.
Legal.
Okay. Let's make sure that I give, we have everybody that wants to speak, speak. You've had the floor. You've had the floor.
First of all, I do, I want to just thank the staff for the work that they put into it. They followed the direction that we asked. And I know that there's, it's not going to happen today. It's not going to happen tomorrow. So it's going to take some time. So I'm willing to give the city attorney the time that he needs to present to us. And I believe that Cordell had some interesting information to present to us, too. I was looking forward to hearing that. I did read the information that you provided to us. So I thought it was my understanding that we were going to get that as well. But to comment also on my colleague, if we went donating our salaries to everything that we believe in, then none of us would be getting paid at any time if we had to pay for the things that we believe in. So we do have the right to stand up and believe in what we want to at some point in time. So I'm good with the information. I'm good with us having a briefing in closed session to get a better understanding before we present to the public because we're being asked a lot of questions, and we need to be educated to the entire process. So I'm good with the information.
Paige, you have not had the floor yet.
Yeah, I can clear your, your comments. And I think that you ought to give the city attorney an opportunity to have that conversation with us in closed session. But I think, as you said, whatever the challenge is, we just face them and move on and not, and not get tangled up with all these delay tactics I call. Just move on. He gave us a perk chart, told us where we got to go. We know the issues are. We just need to know the legal issues. So we move on. And why don't we simply just ask the question of the attorney? It appears that Danville and the Norfolk are similar to what we have here. We're earlier in that timeframe. Appears that. Why don't we just ask the question and get that answer in a closed session? And then we can, we can move on. At least we'll have that part out of the way. And your comments about deeds is right on target. They, you know, they're worth what they're worth. So let's have that conversation with the city attorney as soon as we can and move on.
I'm going to recognize, Bill. You got your hand up.
My question is for the city attorney, does this have to be in closed session, given the high level of public interest? And if so, what qualifies it for closed session?
He answered it already. He said probable litigation. He said that in his opening comments.
Well, I want to hear him, Mr. Attorney.
Certainly. The Freedom of Information Act provides for a closed session meeting when consulting with council, as well as probable litigation. As you all are aware, or should be aware, a year and a half ago, when this issue came up, there was threat of litigation. A month ago, when this was raised again, same parties raised the same issue. So in my reasoned opinion, there is some likelihood of some sort of action, either to clarify or potentially to defend in this matter.
But you know, in this litigious society, just about everything we do as a council is subject to legal ramifications. So it just seems like to me that's a very broad brush that we're using to qualify it for a closed session. That's just my unlawful opinion.
And I think you're saying that more for your colleagues on council's benefit as opposed to the city attorney. Because what I hear the city attorney saying is that, "You have the perfect right to discuss this in open. But if I have to defend you, you might want to strategically have a discussion first." Having said that, I would like, my position is, is that as much of this discussion be in the open as possible. But if our attorney, though, has cautioned us that there's a pending lawsuit that we may want to be strategize, then maybe we ought to heed that caution and have that discussion in closed session. But I think that we all should draw arms and say, as to the greatest extent possible, the discussion about the monument, the memorial, and moving it to Cedar Grove will be done in open session. And let's take this one at a time. Visualize shooting skeet. You shoot at one target at a time. And so the target before us next is the legal questions that have been raised. And so it's my understanding, and I'm going to ask you, Mr. City Attorney, that you advise us to have that preliminary discussion with you. And then if we decide that we want to not have any more closed sessions, it's our call.
Certainly.
Okay. We can have that tonight, or we can, we can have part of it tonight and continue the discussion at our next council meeting on the 24th, 25th?
25th and 26th.
25th and 26th.
25th and 26th, yes.
Okay. So that we don't run out of time. Can we park this for a moment?
I just got one question.
Okay. Let me put this out here. Can we park this for a moment, get the briefing on this, on the school appropriations?
It's very short.
And then come back to this for our remaining time? Would that be agreeable to everybody? Would it be agreeable to you, Nate?
Well, it was just a simple question. It's kind of related and it's kind of not. So I mean, it's up to y'all. I mean, it's, it's, because it was just part of here about the removal and the wall and putting a new fence up. And that's something that should have already happened. So my question was, is they're going to, are they going to hold that up because of this possibility? Or are they going to do the repairs that should have been done?
Can we park that? And let's make sure that we understand the school appropriation?
Yes, we can do the schools now.
And then come back.
Yeah, and that's, it's not going to be long. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, Mrs. Kelly, Chief Financial Officer, will review what you've already heard repeatedly, the FY 17 reappropriations for PPS.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, city council members. As required by state law, the school board has recently requested the following reappropriations from city council. For general fund, 5.9 million. And their request was to reappropriate 750 to the city's CIP educational projects and the remainder to general fund. For risk management, there was 5.6 million unspent, and the school requested 4.695 to be in a reserve, 636 to general fund, and 252, 628 to be transferred for CIP for restroom renovations. For textbook fund was 2.565 remaining, and then the grants funds had 328,000 remaining. We are recommending to city council to honor the total reappropriation request from the school and move 2.3 million from the Portsmouth Public School General Fund to the CIP fund projects. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Is the school board on board with an agreement with what you proposed?
Superintendent and... Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, as I indicated, both the superintendent and I have met probably eight times, telephone conversations, meetings, and every piece of this, the both of us have worked cohesively, cohesively together to bring this back.
Let me say this, too.
And we wrote the compact.
We ask that you do that with the school superintendent.
Yes.
And what you're telling us is that you've done that, and this is the report back.
Yes.
And it comes as a joint recommendation.
It's a joint recommendation.
Good job.
Thank you. And I...
How soon is it going to happen after our, tonight, after you sign?
Tomorrow, tomorrow, you have five city council reports before you for council's consideration of approval. Once you all make whatever determination in your 12 CMRs you have tomorrow, five for the schools, then on Wednesday, Mrs. Kelly, working with Mrs. Doge, is ready to move whatever funds here or there. And all of that, we've met, we're ready to move forward.
So the positive action on those five ordinances
Is what we presented tonight.
Will implement what you and Dr. Bracy worked out?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
First of all, the compact?
Yes.
I'm not sure what, I know at one time I thought this was something that had to come through council, but then you sent an email saying that just you and Dr. Bracy.
Yes.
And I thought, I saw at the school board meeting that they directed Dr. Bracy not to sign the compact. And the other issue is that within this compact, which I don't know what legal band it has, the city attorney would have to inform us on that. But it says here that the city agrees to transfer 1/12 of the school division's appropriation. That shouldn't be an act that the city manager is signing and directing because we already voted on May the 9th that the school system is to receive quarterly allocations. So now, I wouldn't have known until the school system raised the issue at the press conference that they had not received their August payment. Because we voted as a council in the ordinance that it is quarterly allocation. And so now, once again, we are acting contrary to the intent and directive of council. And I just want to know, once again, is that how we're going to be operating? Because we did not vote, nor was it presented in the public hearing, that it would be 1/12, that it was a quarterly allocation. And so how does it now become a monthly allocation?
It has been a monthly allocation since I've come on as city manager.
But that's not what council approved. Council approved a quarterly allocation. And I know that's what's recorded in the ordinance. And so how does the city manager, whoever unilaterally decides to ignore an ordinance?
Let's take one issue at a time. The first issue is whether or not we appropriate these funds. And that's what's before us tonight.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions about the appropriation that will be before us? Okay. All right. The way I understand the email today, that this is a document that does memorialize the relationship that you and the school superintendent have.
Yes.
And I think it, my hat off to you. I think that that, you guys did a great job in working this out. And I am comfortable, and I support the adoption of all five of those ordinances. Cash flow wise, I've never been in the weeds on that, and I'm not going to get in the weeds on that. And I appreciate what you're saying. But I think the bigger, the bigger issue is that we now have a full understanding of what the schools, what they use this money for, and it's going to be reappropriated.
Well, I appreciate how you framed that. I agree, the appropriation issue, if that's what the school has agreed to its fine. Framing it as getting into the weeds, we shouldn't be in the weeds. That's my point. Because we voted on a quarterly allocation. And I don't know why council would vote to do something, and then management decides unilaterally not to file. This compact here violates the ordinance. And so what's the use of us passing an ordinance saying schools will be, we move from lump sum funding to quarterly funding? Now, when did we vote to make it monthly funding?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council.
Regardless of whether it was a previous practice.
I understand, Dr. Bracy.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council. Since becoming the city manager, and I can't speak to previous, the allocations of 1/12, 1/12, 1/12, 1/12, 12 of them have been in place. The quarterly, I remember there was a discussion of the categorical, but since this team has come on board, so we didn't change anything that was not already in place. So it's no unilateral decision by city manager Patton and CFO Kelly to change anything opposite of what this city was already doing in its contributions. Maybe at one time, it was supposed to be quarterly, but it was never done prior to my coming or changed since I have been here. And if council decides that, then that's something different. If you want to give them four payments instead of 12, that's council's decision.
Well, why aren't you making quarterly payments when the ordinance requires?
Because I just said to you, since my coming here, 1/12...
But just because that's how it was.
I never knew there was a difference, Dr. Whitaker.
Well, I just want to make it clear that when you say that's how it was, when you say that, doesn't mean it was right.
I'm not saying that it was right, but I'm just sharing what I have done.
You know, in your experience as a city manager, you know the difference between 1/12 and 1/4.
I know the difference between those.
We voted on quarterly. And my question is, why is it that now in a compact, we are saying 1/12?
Because that's what we've been doing.
I think the ordinance says that it's a quarterly appropriation, just like we appropriate in the general fund, all the funds on day one. We don't have all of the funds on day one. It comes in throughout the course of the year. So that's a cash flow issue. And again, I recommend that we not get into that. Let that be worked out between the manager and the school superintendent.
Well, if you're going to do that, you need to change the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
You need to change, because the ordinance says quarterly payments, and that's what...
Says a quarterly appropriation.
Appropriation.
Right. It's appropriated to the school board on a quarterly basis.
That's not a payment.
That's not a payment.
That's not a payment.
You can play on the words on one.
But it's not.
I know the intent of council was to fund them quarterly.
Thank you.
And I don't know why monthly has come into this discussion, because we certainly didn't vote on that.
Bill?
I see in the compact, it states that we're going to revisit the combining risk management fund, going to begin discussions to explore that. I thought those discussions have already occurred, and they rejected it. Is it new hope now that that's going to happen, and we're going to be able to save the taxpayers a couple million dollars?
Mr. Moody and members of city council, I think that with both Dr. Bracy and myself working together, helping both schools and council understand, as we will, we've already brought Mr. Parker in to make a presentation, we also had at that meeting our person from Wells Fargo, who deals with our risk management part. With this, we're looking to actually work together in bringing those persons who are just a part of our meeting before our team working together, which would be the superintendent, myself, and risk manager, and then others we need to bring in, so there can be a clear understanding of what risk management requires, where it looks at workman's compensation, general liability, and property coverage, not anything to do with the health piece, just those pieces, and a recommendation be made in the upcoming 19 budget. That is what the request is.
Unless the school board changes, they have directed the superintendent not to sign the compact. One member tore it up.
Well, Dr. Bracy, Dr. Bracy...
Dr. Bracy cannot unilaterally sign this without the school board's permission.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, today, I met with Dr. Bracy. I shared with you that this, what's on here, is actually the day-to-day work that Dr. Bracy and I will have to do. And it's not that which city council or the school board will be doing. So that is what my email to you said, and Dr. Bracy and Mr. Parent agreed.
This memorializes your relationship with...
Our relationship.
I don't have any problems. And I think this discussion takes away from the fact that we crossed a major milestone here, which is, is that the money's been returned. It's not being transferred in the old budget, it's being reappropriated.
Yes.
Every penny of it.
Yes.
Every penny. And so what we do... And so don't we, why don't we do a victory dance here?
No, we're not going to do a victory dance because you were trying to limit the school funding, and had they not aggressively attacked it, it would have gone just like you all had planned to and not re-appropriate that money. But they had the news conference brought it to the attention of the public, and that's when you changed.
That's your opinion, Dr. Whitaker. Thank you, Paul.
So let's not take this to a level of ignorance, talk about victory dancing.
Well, I must celebrate a victory, and I hope my colleagues do the same, and the community as well. Now, can we move on back to the subject?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Let me ask you a question. I guess from Mr. Wright. It's, reference to this chart, it's kind of part of this, but it was in reference to the retaining wall and fence at the cemetery that's on Effingham Street. And I know this is, we're approaching a year since Hurricane Matthew, and that wall is still in a very poor state of repair. It hasn't been corrected yet. And when I recently visited the area, there was even bricks in the roadway there, creating liability force in case one was thrown up and hit a windshield of vehicle or anything else. So I guess my question is, is since it was added to this flow chart, are we just not going to make the repair that's been there for a year? Or is it just being held off? What are we going to do with that?
All right, talk to that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, it was only two weeks ago that we received the FEMA money for the cemetery wall. We did not get the FEMA money for the wall, for the fence, with the large amount, almost $500,000 we received. There was additional information that we had to provide to FEMA in order for the wall to qualify. With that said, based on the work we have to do here, now with the money for that portion of the wall, if we move as we could possibly move, all of that could be done at one time with the money already in place for that particular span of the fence.
Well, I didn't, based on the directions in the entrance to the cemetery, I wouldn't think that that portion of the wall would have any effect on coming in and out of the entrance of the cemetery. That's on the side, and it's a retaining wall, and it's some height off of the level roadway. So I wouldn't think that one would be part of the other, and, you know, since it's been in this kind of state for almost a year now, that we could move forward and make those corrections.
Can we ask the city manager to put back a plan?
Yes, we're being asked to consider not a wall by the monument group or the cemetery group, but to continue with the wrought iron fence that's coming and ensure what was the base for it, the bricks. So we'll bring that back.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll bring it back.
Can we bring that back?
Yeah.
Okay. Dr. Whitaker.
In the interest of time and the fact that these items have some moving parts to them that engineering will have to take care of, I would like to recommend that we direct the city manager to an RFP on the market so that we can start getting some cost figures. And that doesn't commit us one way or the other, but at least we still have the information and we don't have to wait to get it after all of these hoops have jumped. Because I think that there's a consensus on council that the monument be moved. And so if we could get an RFP out so we can start getting some figures in, and we don't have to wait for this per analysis nor all of the legal analysis to be completed before we get an RFP.
That's a very good point. What I would like is for council to consider an appropriation of funds, to go ahead and start the engineering. Because you need the engineering done in order to do the RFP. You've got to understand how the thing's put together. And so I think that we ought to consider the appropriation of, if it takes $20,000 to do, start the engineering work that's necessary to get us down this path.
I think before we start spending money piecemeal, I would like to see the city manager come back with an estimate on what the total cost would be to move the monument, to re-erect it in the cemetery, and all the engineering studies and what have you. I think this council and the public need to know what that amount is going to be. We've heard everything from close to a million dollars down to $100,000, which I think is most people would say is not accurate. So truth probably lies in between, but I think it's good that we know what that amount is before we start making payments.
Well, I understand you, Bill. But I think for it to have any meaningful relevance to reality, there needs to be some preliminary engineering done in order to figure out what the cost is. I mean, I don't know what type of soil is under that existing monument and what the folks did in 1880 in order to prepare the ground. There may have to be some ground preparation. We might be lucky and there's not. And so I think it's unfair to give that task to the city manager, and she comes back with X, and it'd be X plus 10.
Well, we should put an RFP out for that then, so she can get back with us on the cost of what needs to be appropriated. And even before that, unless I've missed it, this council hasn't really had a vote on whether or not to move the monument.
We're working our way through that process. You're right. We had a consensus at the last council meeting that we direct the city manager, which she has done, to come back with the steps to get us from step A to step Z, assuming that there's 26 steps. And again, I think that what she's done and her team is really pretty awesome here in a short period of time. And she's laid it out. Now, it is going to cost money, and it's probably going to bring about some type of lawsuit from a third party.
Yes.
I'm willing for that. But again, I think we need to have the benefit of the discussion with the attorney as to what standing a third party would have in bringing a lawsuit. Right now, we've done nothing, so there's nothing to bring, nobody's harmed. But we have started the process.
I know. I'm just waiting on turn. Want to make sure you saw.
And just so that everybody's aware of the fact, this is not a new conversation. Conversations about moving the monument are reflected in our council minutes as early as the spring of 1927, when there was a discussion to move it to Washington Street. 1942, to move it to City Park. From 1935 to 1945, moved to City Park. And April of 1954, the paper said, had an article that says, "To be moved or not to be moved?" That is the question. So I encourage you all, again, let's not, let's stay focused and respectful of each other. There's a process. The process is laid out before us. What lies on the critical path are these legal questions that, personally, I have some comfort in what I've heard from the city attorney. But I'm just one person, and I'm not an attorney.
Well, Ms. Mayor, I have comfort in the Danville case, the city attorney general opinions that are pretty clear and on point unless it is something that distinguishes monument, which is, I thought we were going to get a report on, is there a deed that distinguishes us? Or was there an act by the general assembly that called for that monument to be built?
Okay. But we, the staff has done what we asked them to do at the last council meeting. We have, we've had a good discussion tonight. Our city attorney has cautioned us that he thinks that our first discussion about the legal issues ought to be in closed session. We have 15 minutes tonight to start that conversation, or we can have that conversation on the 25th.
The only comment I was going to make, since I was never recognized, is the fact that, yeah, this is a lot of work to win this flow chart, but the very first thing at the bottom on the left is the legal. So before we appropriate funds to be spent, I think it's important that we have the conversation with our city attorney. And for him advising us that we should go into closed session to hear his advice, there's probably some very important details we need to hear. So I think we need to wait before we start spending any money till, after we have that conversation with our attorney to advise us better.
I think that's the consensus, Nate.
Yeah.
I mean, just summarize what I hear is the discussion around the table. The only issue tonight is, do we start that tonight and have it bifurcated? Or do we wait until the next 25?
We'll just do it on 25th, Mayor.
All right, 25th?
Yes.
25th?
And we come back prepared with all the questions from Dr. Whitaker and all the way around, and we get all those on 25th.
Certainly.
Ms. Mayor, I just want to put a record. I don't see why it needs to be in closed session. I think it should be.
Understood.
Considering all the information that has gone out to the public, a lot of misinformation to the public.
I agree with my colleague. I think the whole discussion should be from the public. There is no pending lawsuit, so there's no reason.
We haven't been made aware of pending lawsuits.
Well, I'm not going to be redundant, so you all know what my position is. Dr. Pat?
I think we'll follow the vice attorney and let him have a conversation with us in closed session, and we can decide when we come out what we want to say after that.
I would also, Mayor, say for our next session that we have, I'd like to bring forward the city's cemetery perpetual care fund.
Please do.
I shall.
All right. Well, this concludes our agenda meeting. Please assemble those attending at the High Street Landing.
High Street Landing, 6:30.